For this May 5, 2020, pre-meeting of the County Commission. Let's just look over the agenda for a moment. On staff updates, we have discussion of the Mountain Mobility Contract. Our investment policy update given by Don Warren. Dr. Molendor and Fletcher Tove will give an update on COVID-19 work. And then we have the Fire District request for the FY21 budget. So we'll be hearing from folks on that, including our staff Jennifer Barnett. Are there any other items anyone wants to discuss at this pre-meeting today? All right, well, great. So first up is the Mountain Mobility Contract, and Matt Cable's going to help us out on this one.
We have a brief presentation. It's just a couple of slides Max will be pulling up for us. There it is. So Mountain Mobility's operating contract. The contract, the current contract that we have, is set to expire June 30 of 2020. And we'll be entering into a new contract beginning July 1 for operation of that service. The contract covers our operating of Mountain Mobility. This includes our door-to-door demand response service as well as our deviated fixed route trailblazer services. It includes dispatching and deploying of the vehicles, so actual oversight of the vehicles, including maintenance of the vehicles and equipment under a lease agreement. It includes hiring and management of the reservationists, schedulers, vehicle operators, dispatch, and all other operations staff. That's the largest expense generally under the contract. It includes investigating any and all accidents and incidents that involve passengers or vehicles and equipment. And another major expense as part of that contract is insuring the vehicles and operations. The county issued an RFP for proposals. Because we use federal and state funding, grant funding, to support this contract, and we are a public transit operation, we adhere to federal and state procurement guidelines. So we use that as a model. And county staff in the planning department, working alongside of our procurement staff, developed a schedule for this RFP. It was released in mid-February on February 17. We offered a voluntary pre-proposal conference, which was attended by two of the proposers, where we provided an overview of the system, the services, the operation locations. We had a submittal deadline for questions on March 6. On the 13th, we issued an initial addendum that included responses to those questions. We received over 150 questions, to which we provided a response and additional data in detail in order to have qualified responses. On March 22, we issued another addendum to the RFP. If you recall, March 13 and March 12 was when a lot of things happened and changed related to COVID-19. And so we actually had to issue another addendum to revise our submittal policy and procedure for that particular contract, to make that an electronic process. With that change, technical proposals would be due March 27. Initially, they were to submit technical and cost proposals together, and we would open the second submittal of the cost proposals later. But here, we received the technical proposals. The selection committee met, reviewed them as a group after reviewing them independently, and scored and provided the scoring for the proposals. Those proposals, which were complete and qualified submittals, were asked to then submit a cost proposal. Those cost proposals were due on April the 8. And then the selection committee met again after reviewing them independently to score the cost proposals. Between then and April 27, county staff, as part of a negotiations team, worked with the highest-scoring proposer. They were both highest-scoring technically and under cost. And so total highest-scoring, highest-scoring independently of each other, and the lowest-cost offering provider entered into negotiations with the county to come up with a rate costs for this particular contract. The contract includes an initial three-year term with two possible three-year extensions. And we anticipate that we'll be bringing to the board an item on May 19 for you to take action on the contract. I'll be happy to answer any questions about the process and what we'll be bringing forward to you at your next meeting.
Can you give us any just sort of really high-level kind of preview of the business terms of the new contract?
Sure. And so we feel like our negotiation's actually been fairly successful in this round. If you'll recall, kind of in our initial discussions, we anticipated a pretty substantial increase in costs, and we're not seeing that. Now, this proposal is a little different than our current contract. We had established a base mileage that's higher than our current base mileage. And so when you do that, your costs are spread a little differently. But our proposed rate that we've arrived at through negotiations is less than our current rate per mile. So that is an achievement. Within that, we also had other achievement, and it's been part of our negotiation process, was to work with the contractor to try to drive up the wages of the staff that will be employed locally. And so we did have success in that area of getting, within that first three-year term, the average salary across all positions at $15 or higher. So that was a win through that negotiation process. As I said, it's an initial three-year term, and so we'll work through that three-year period. Obviously, the county, if we were unhappy with the service in any of that period, could certainly have means by which to exit the contract. But it is a three-year term with extension options.
Well, thank you for advocating for those wages for the folks who are doing that important work. And you said that the average wage is 15 an hour, or is that what's, is there a floor on it?
So there, and it will include in the contract documents both the hiring wage and the average wage for employees. And our goal was to get average wages across all of those. I will say that there are a number of positions that their base and average salaries are above 15 in year one. And so it was working through those other salaries. For perspective, the current average hourly pay for vehicle operators is 1,273. And so that's a big adjustment over, you know, the next three-year period to push those wages up by that increment.
Great. Commissioner, other questions? All right. Thank you very much for the update. All right, Mr. Warren, investment policy update.
Good afternoon. Wait for Max to, there it is. Okay, so we haven't looked at our investment policy since 1996. So it was time to take a look at it, bring it up to date, make sure that we were matching what state statute required, best practice, that sort of thing. So as we went through the policy, made some changes, cleaned it up, reordered some of the stuff. Most notable, we had to replace the National Association of Security Dealers because they no longer exist. So we updated that to the Financial Industry Regulatory Authority, which is current now. We also added more language for reporting back to the board on our investments because at the time when I was doing this, I thought that we were going to actually do more investments. However, now, I don't know what we're going to do because interest rates are so low. So it totally spoiled my plan. However, we still need to update the policy. We also added language so that all investments must be made in accordance with general statutes. And we took out some restrictive language in there so that if general statute gets updated, we don't have to go back and continually update our policy because we will be in line with it. Also, we updated maximum maturity from two years to five years. Best practice is to have a maximum maturity from the date of settlement out to five years so that you can gain some more yields on some other types of investments. Doesn't mean that we would go out five years because we would want to keep our portfolio relatively short, probably two and a half to three years. But the way we were limited at two years, we couldn't do that. Added limits to the investment holdings to ensure that we are diversifying. This is best practice. You don't want to put all your eggs in one basket. So we have some language in there that stipulates how much should be in federal agencies and how much we should have in commercial paper and that sort of thing. We also added some language on prohibited investments and practices. Specifically, we wanted to make sure that it was stated that we wouldn't be chasing yields, we wouldn't be doing daily transactions, trading, that sort of thing, because that's not what we should be doing with public monies. And then we added a glossary so that all the terms that are in here, people can actually look at it and know what they mean if they have questions. Substance of the investment policy didn't change a whole lot, but it is definitely a lot cleaner and clearer. So I plan on bringing the policy to you on the next meeting, which is the 19th. And I was going to put it on consent unless you want to go over another presentation at that meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So I think you answered mine. So you want to put this on the meeting on the 19th, which will have all the detail and then the, you know, on what you're doing to protect, as you said, the public's money. So that's my, so you're going to put it on the 19th?
Yeah. Would you like, do you want another presentation, or do you want it on consent?
No, I would like to, I would like for the public to.
Okay.
I'd like to see, you know, more of, you know, the bullet points.
Sure.
A little depth on it because it's, you know, it's a good job. I appreciate you doing it. And I think the public needs to know that when it comes to the, you know, the public money that's sitting here, that that money is not being, that money is not, I guess there's always risk associated with anything, but that that has been, is very limited in that we have policy, and now an updated policy, that protects that money.
Absolutely.
And I think it's good for them to know that.
Okay. Sure, I think a short presentation would be fine. I mean, these are mostly, it sounds like, technical cleanup items for the most part. So I think that, as Commissioner said, it's good for folks to know that this is all invested in very conservative, responsible ways, so.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this item? All right, thank you, Mr. Warren.
All right, thank you.
All right, Dr. Molendor and Fletcher Tove, who's going first? Thanks for being here.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I was just going to give a brief update of where we are and what we're working on. And so first, I guess if Max can pull up the data dashboard, other one, sorry. Thanks. So this is our new data dashboard that rolled out last Thursday. And so this is, as of today, this is still accurate, showing the number of cases we have. And it's, the top-left graph is what we call an EPI curve. It shows on a day-to-day basis the number of new positive tests. And so this is graphed by the date the test was collected. And then down below that is the number of tests that have been performed and reported to us. And so there's a caveat there that this count represents only all the tests that have been reported to us. We know that we may not have an inclusive number, but it's the best number that's available to us. And we know that there's a lag in that, and that's where that shadowed area of that graph shows that providers don't necessarily report their testing on the same day they do it. So there can be several days delay and, but that number is updated when the reports come to us. And if Max, if you can hit that running total button down at the bottom left of the tests, maybe, okay. Yeah, so that's, it's showing accumulative, right? So it's adding up everything. So there's different ways to look at that information. But again, it's all summarized over on the right-hand side where it says the total number of cases, the total number of deaths, and the total number of tests administered and reported to us. And then we still have that demographic information about the cases based on age range, ethnicity, gender, and race data as self-reported information. And so we've added some, two other information below it. Fletcher, I don't know if you want to speak more to that, and then I'll come back and sort of say more.
So recent additions are, we added the cases and deaths per 100,000 residents by county. Really, what to take away from this one is that of the 10 most populous counties in the state, we're doing really well as far as numbers. And I think that's due to some of the proactive and extensive actions we took early on, which leads us to the bottom right, you see the timeline of our responses versus our case count. And Max, if you go, yeah, play through this again, if people can go look at this, it shows you step-by-step on the timeline that some of the more proactive steps, deliberate steps we've taken from the county and through the EOC to kind of slow the spread of COVID throughout the community. So another tool for the public to look at and see, kind of see what we've been doing as the county.
And I'll make a comment about, so, you know, I only have access to Buncombe County information or state information as a whole, but what I can say from conversations I've been on with other health directors of other counties, the amount of testing we've done in this county is as good, if not better, than some of these larger counties, slightly larger counties. And so it's not, I would say it's not just, I don't want people to think, oh, our case count is low because we haven't done as much testing as some of these other counties. I don't think we're behind that. I don't, I don't think that's the reason. And the guidance is, and we're trying to get people, everyone to understand that while weeks ago, the guidance was, if you have mild symptoms, stay home, isolate yourself. Because we don't have enough PPE, because there isn't enough testing capacity, that guidance switched on the 20th of April and is now, if you have symptoms, we want you to get tested. And so I think just trying to push, continue to push that out into the community and make people aware that it's okay. Call your healthcare provider, call the urgent cares. They will, they will screen you. And if you meet those criteria, which again, have now increased as well, the symptoms have increased to include things like muscle aches, sore throat, that you should be able to get testing. And if you can't, then that's where you call us and we will help you. And so we need people to get tested because we need to identify them, give them proper guidance, do contact tracing, find their contacts, and get them tested if they're symptomatic. And I heard on a call today that soon there will be guidance to test their asymptomatic close contacts as well. So we're getting to a point where we'd be doing even testing of asymptomatic individuals who have been close contacts to a case. So I think that there has been a lot of guidance changes through this whole pandemic, and it can be really hard for people to keep up with what's the current guidance. And there probably is a bit of fatigue about the whole thing too, right? And I just want to make sure that people who have symptoms are aware they should get tested and can get tested. Our self-checker, so we launched that on Thursday as well. As of the end of yesterday, we had 270 individuals complete the self-checker. More people went to it and maybe partially went through it, but didn't complete the entire process. So 270 completed it. 114 individuals were instructed to seek care, which, and get testing. So that may have been, they were told to call 911 or to call their healthcare provider, depending on how severe their symptoms were. So that's 42% of people who completed it were given instruction to follow up with their healthcare provider or with 911. And so, again, we're encouraging people to go and use that tool. That helps us as well to know what's going on in the community. And based on the information gathered, we potentially could know where we need to focus testing if there's not testing in the community. And so Max, if you can show that map you showed earlier. So this is just a map of, these are the four Mercy Urgent Cares, the Range Urgent Care O'Meriman, and Mahack Family Health Center. Those are where we have agreements, you know, where we can send people who don't have a healthcare provider or where their healthcare provider is unable to test them. That's where they can call, do some telehealth, be screened, and then go and get curbside specimen collection for testing. And we are in contact with others, other urgent care-like facilities who are willing to see the general public, people who aren't, don't have a healthcare, primary care provider. So this map, we will continue to increase.
Is that map on our website?
That we just created yesterday evening. So the, we have an article, and we could put this with the article, but that was just created by our DAS team yesterday. And in terms of testing, so again, there are primary care providers who have been doing testing, continue to do testing for their patient population. We have these resources, but we're also looking at how, how can we get testing out into areas where people might not have transportation or might have other barriers to get to one of these clinics? And so we have been in communication with our FQHCs, federally qualified health centers in town. And so we have a plan to start, we have a meeting tomorrow to finalize the details, but hopefully next week, the plan is to get some testing out into specific populations where people can walk up and get tested. And so we're excited about that. Working with healthcare providers to make sure they know all the current guidance. So I sent out an email yesterday to make sure they were up to date on the current guidance of who to suspect of having COVID-19 and where, which labs are have capacity and how to get in touch with those labs, how to get PPE if they don't notice. So just reiterating to them, you know, what can we do to help you get your patients tested? Yeah. And we'll see this, you know, there's more coming in terms of testing guidance, testing supplies, and initiatives coming from state and federal. So I think that's all I have to say right now. It's alternative advice.
I do have one question about the testing, the community testing centers for next week. So when do we expect the details of that to be kind of finalized so that that can be shared with the public in terms of?
Thursday.
On Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening. So Dr. Molendor talked about we're greatly expanding our testing capabilities. So part of Governor Cooper's three-pronged approach was increased testing, increased capacity for contact tracing, and consistent downward trends. So we're doing really well, slowly but gradually increasing testing capacity. As far as contact tracing, we have a local pool, expanded pool, that's standing by as soon as we get more guidance and a platform from the state to do that locally. We also know the state's expanding a statewide campaign to enlist people in that effort. So we're looking good on contact tracing. Trends, a little bit of a mixed bag. We do have an increased case count, but if you look at other metrics such as hospital beds available, ICU units, we're doing really well in hospital census. So as we look at the combination of metrics, a little bit different directions there, but still looking good overall, which looks, puts us in a good setting, good footing to step into Phase 1, as the governor laid out. We know he laid out his three-phase approach to reopen the state. Right now, we just have a skeletal framework of what that looks like, but I think we're all pretty excited about 5:00 PM today, hopefully getting some more details. Once we get some more details on what Phase 1 looks like, we're going to digest that and push that out to the community as quickly as possible in an informative manner so everyone can start planning and preparing. What do you anticipate from previous language from the governor is that the biggest difference from where we are now to Phase 1 is that there will be some relaxations for some limited non-essential retail. And I don't know much more specifics than that, but we're anticipating the mass gathering guidance to stay the same for 10 people until Phase 2, and some other guidance about gathering venues such as houses of worship, restaurants, entertainment venues to stay the same until Phase 2. So really, the biggest change we're looking at and anticipating is some increased retail activity, some increased accommodations for people to travel to and from commercial activity.
And Fletcher, I mean, again, like you said, we don't have all the details. Hopefully, those will get fleshed out at 5:00 by the governor this afternoon. But based on what they've said, at this point, the expectation is that it'll probably be all retail is open, but with different protocols for safety provisions or limitations on visitors, things like that.
Correct. I don't want to overextending guess too far, but we're anticipating something like that. What I would expect to see is things very similar to what he did for grocery stores, where there's a list of minimum criteria you have to meet. There's going to be a capacity limit based on something, whether it's square footage. But there'll be capacity limits, probably people have to post it on the exterior, maybe look at given directions for walking up and down aisles, me arranging stuff to accommodate for six feet where you can, encouraging frontline employees to wear some sort of face covering, things like that. I would expect, in the nature, the spirit of it, to be very similar to what happened with grocery stores. I want to talk a bit more about, as we get the information, we're developing a county-wide communications campaign so that we go into reopening Phase 1 on a unified front across the county, so that everyone's using the same language, the same resources. Part of that campaign is pushing out materials so businesses can post, you know, what Phase 1 entails and how they're meeting that criteria. Part of that campaign is going to be posting so customers, as they enter a business, will know what's expected of them as far as their behavior and what they need to be doing. And then the last part of that campaign will be for businesses to present, you know, on their storefronts, the steps they've been taking and mandated to take to ensure everyone's safety. Because we know, even though we open up the community, there's still going to be some people concerned. We're not going to see the same numbers of people engaging in those, that retail activity. So just try to let people know, make them aware of all the steps people are taking to ensure their safety, so people can be less fearful about going back out into the community.
Any questions? Concludes.
Just a couple of questions. Thank you. This is really fantastic work and great presentation. Do you all, it sounds like there's sort of a bit of a lag time between the updated guidance around testing all symptomatic people, and that's starting to really show up in the numbers we're seeing. It looks like there's sort of a bit of a bump last week. But can you kind of talk through any more specifically, like, how many tests we might expect to see on a daily basis in a week or so, or two weeks, or anything like that?
So the problem I have with giving numbers is I don't know how many symptomatic individuals there are in the county.
Right.
Right? And so, you know, all the guidance, you know, has been, but I've heard the state say is we need to test 5% of our population within a month. And so if you do the math, you know, you can figure out how much proportionally we have of the population in Buncombe County. But again, my question back to the state was, well, what if I don't have X number of symptomatic individuals in Buncombe County to test? Can I, can we then expand testing to asymptomatic? And so I think what I've heard back is, that's just guidance. We know that there have been, there are some counties in the state that haven't done much testing at all. And so it's more of a sort of guide for them to say, hey, here's how much you should be doing, or might want to, to sort of encourage more testing and, but what I am hearing, it's more like a tiered approach. You start with your symptomatic individuals, you want to test them. And then, like what I said earlier, what it sounds like is asymptomatic close contacts, and then maybe, again, the next tier might be asymptomatic individuals who are in high-priority settings or work in high, but the guidance right now is, let's just get all these symptomatic individuals tested initially because that's where we know we have issues with spread.
Great, thank you. That makes a lot of sense. A quick follow-up question. You had mentioned yesterday, I guess, in the update, the community update, and then it's in the, I saw the numbers in the data, that the number of Latinx folks testing positive seems to be kind of sharply increasing. Any insights into what's happening there and ways we might be addressing that?
So, yeah, so everybody, I just want to say why I sometimes am hesitant to say things. Like, you know, my first job, right, is to protect, there's protected health information. We're a HIPAA-covered entity, and so I have to be cautious about how much I say so that people can't be identified. So it's not that I'm trying to not be transparent, but I have to be very cautious, and I know that Tammy Stewart, our compliance officer, is somewhere watching me. So what I would say is that we know, like.
The question more is just if we see any group kind of a sharp horizon, like, what are the kinds of things we're thinking about, about how to make sure every group, especially those who might have barriers or is access?
Right.
That might be a way to refrain it.
Right, right. So what I would say is that, well, we know that we've had our media briefings interpreted into Spanish, and we know we get very high number of people watching those. And so, and we have, when that information came out late last, it was after Thursday's media briefing, that people saw the increase. And the number of cases in the Latinx population, people from the community reached out and said, hey, you know, can we help? And so we have connected with those community partners to make sure messaging is getting out into the community. And what I would say, you know, it's, the message of this is the same, and make sure that no matter where you're at, at home or work, to make sure you're able to follow those social distancing and, physical distancing and face covering guidance and hand washing. I feel that Avril's trying to tell me something. But we are working with our community engagement team and with community partners to make sure that we are getting into those populations as well to increase testing.
Thanks, and I didn't mean to trigger a HIPAA issue, but just.
No, 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 no. It's just I have to be mindful.
And the piece I wanted her to talk a little bit about is Equity Group, that one we go out for mobile testing. So if you want to share a little bit about how we're looking at that broader picture.
Yeah, so in terms of trying to figure out, yeah, where do we take our community testing? We're looking at social determinants of health data. So Zo and Pofu and DK Wesley have been working on using data to help figure out where might be the populations that are under-resourced and need connected to testing. And so, again. And so again, having an equity lens on what we're doing, using key informants and like, you know, stakeholders in those communities to help us as well, so that it's not public health coming in, but it's community inviting us in as well. Yeah, yeah.
I still have one more question on testing. So in terms of the state policy, so as you've said, there's been different, you know, what the guidance was two weeks ago, it was different than it is today, and it'll be different in the future. But in terms of what it is today from the state, so I've heard two different, kind of two different formulas. One, I've heard the state say this 5,000 to 7,000 tests a day is where they want to get the state to. And I don't know if we're there yet. I don't think we have been, but they're trying to get it up to those numbers. And, and then there's this 5% of your county number, right? That'd be a good goal to accomplish in 30 days, which actually seems like a much bigger number than the, than the, you know, assuming all counties kind of do their proportional part. You know, if we did our proportional part, I think the numbers are between 125 and 175 per day. If we were doing like, because North Buncombe County is 2.5% of the whole population, right? So if the whole population's doing 5,000 to 7,000 a day, here in Buncombe County, we'd be doing around 125 to 175 to do our proportional amount. If we were going to do 5% of the county in 30 days, that's like, like 12,000 or so. So quite a bit, quite a bit more. What is the, and, and both of those numbers are more than we are doing currently, even if we were going for the smaller range. But which of those two things is the state's kind of official position at this time? Or are they just both things that, you know, some of the health officials and political leadership at the state have stated, but neither of them is like the formal position?
Yeah. What I heard when I asked the question about, you know, is this number like we have to meet it? Is this a goal? What is this? And the answer was, it's just, it's just guidance and that, again, what we want is to make sure that everybody who has symptoms is getting tested. That's first and foremost. And so if you test all those people and you, and you can find no one else who has symptoms in your county and you haven't reached your goal, that's okay. And that's where, and that's where you might get the, the ability to say, okay, now we can go and start testing asymptomatic individuals. And so I don't think it's a, it's not like we're going to be allocated. It's a, it's a base solely on population alone. But we know that there are pockets in the state where there is a heavier burden of disease, right? Like, I mean, we're seeing that in like the Mecklenburg area. And then we're seeing on other parts of the state where, is there still one county who has not reported a case? I feel like it's been at 99 counties for a while, but. So I, I think it's just a suggestion. Nobody is saying you have to do that number of cases. And I don't, until the guidance opens up and says to focus on asymptomatic individuals, I don't, I don't, I don't think they would like hold you accountable. Maybe I'm not answering your question totally.
Well, let me ask this.
Should we strive for that?
They're not saying, don't do more than that. They're not saying, they're not saying only test people with symptoms. They're not saying that, are they?
They are saying only, currently the guidance is focused, the clinicians, if they suspect people of having COVID, they should be testing. The guidance about asymptomatic testing currently is only if there's an outbreak in a long-term care facility. If there's a case in a long-term care facility, they encourage testing of all staff and residents asymptomatic and symptomatic. Currently, there is no guidance from the state about testing asymptomatic individuals in any other way. Now, the CDC guidance just changed. And so a private doc can do whatever they want, really, you know? So if a private doctor sees the CDC guidance and it says, consider testing asymptomatic individuals who are of this population, then a private doc can do that. I'm just saying that that's not the guidance currently the state is sending to providers.
And I'm not trying to berate this, but these are, I think these are important, important public health, you know, decisions. I just wanted to clarify whether the, there's, they're not giving affirmative guidance to test beyond people who have symptoms, or if they are giving affirmative guidance, don't do that.
They're not giving affirmative, they're just saying your first priority should be all the symptomatic individuals. Don't waste testing on asymptomatic individuals before you've done, you've found all the asymptomatic, right? And so I want to make sure that those symptomatic individuals are getting priority, right? That that's, those are people we know are more likely to have COVID-19. And so we need to make sure that we're reaching them first and foremost. And I don't know that we're doing that yet. I get, I see, I, I, I think we are.
Just as an example, like to say like, we shouldn't, if we could, be testing staff who work in nursing homes. Like that's, that's like.
The issue becomes, well, here's, but here's the issue.
Right.
So when you test an asymptomatic individual one time, all you know is that that moment in time, they didn't have COVID-19. When do you retest them?
I think.
That's the, and that's where the state, I will say that's where the state currently is looking at other states who are further along in this epidemic, in this pandemic, to learn from them and see like, okay, so you tested initially these asymptomatic individuals. When did you retest them and what was the outcome of that? And then when, you know what I mean, to sort of find when it wears that sweet spot of, of how frequently do you test? And I think when they get that guidance, which I've heard is coming soon, then we'll be able to open it up broader to what you're asking. And I look forward to that. I'm just saying, right now, we don't have that full picture of how frequently to test the asymptomatic.
I, right. It just, but I guess I just, you know, when we look at our region, you know, the places where this outbreaks are occurring that are causing a lot of illness and a lot of death are in these, you know, congregated senior citizen centers, right? Nursing homes and others. So it just seems like the obvious thing is that we need to be regularly testing the staff who work in those facilities. I mean, ideally, we'd be having, you know, universal testing and things like that, but we know we're very, we're very, very far away from the capacity to do that. So I just, you know, frankly, the guidance, if that is the guidance, it just seems, it seems inadequate.
Well, again, it's not, they are actively like on the call today at 1:00. They said, we are anticipating having an answer for when we know how frequently to retest these individuals. And I think once they have that understood and have a, feel like that's good and will give us good and accurate coverage and, and actionable results, then they'll say, go forth and like, here's, here's the guidance. But until we get that, it's like we do it once, and then we don't know when to go back again, kind of thing. And so I, I, what I, from what I heard, I feel like this, this answer will be coming possibly by the end of this week. So they get it. We get it. I.
Can you just share a quick snapshot update of what we're seeing at the supply chain level? You know, there's a lot of encouraging news or previews. Yeah, that would be great.
So, yeah, so the 17,000, so the state says there's capacity to do 17,000 tests. If you, if they add up all the labs in the state who are doing testing, there's capacity to do 17,000 tests a day. And what we're hearing is they have, you know, the supplies. I will say that the supplies have shifted in terms of, you know, once it was very much only nasopharyngeal swabs, and then there were oropharyngeal swabs, throat swabs, and now there's been this shift to a lot of nasal swabs, which are just like, just barely inside your nose kind of thing. And there have been some concerns about how good those specimens are. And so there's a lot of discussion about that. But, you know, the, the labs have the, the supply kits that can be used for testing. And the providers, when they're requesting those supplies from their lab, you know, account execs, they're getting them. And then some providers have even gone their own route and ordered supplies from supply companies and then can use those supplies to send the tests to live corps. So I'm not hearing that being an issue. It's PPE is still a significant issue. And I know the state expressed that and calls to the federal government over the weekend that thanks, you know, thanks for helping with the testing supply chain, but don't forget about the PPE because we can't do the tests if we don't have the PPE.
Great. Thank you. And just quickly, actually, this is for other commissioners, because I know we're trying to make sure our process tracks as community response tracks. And it seems like soon enough, we'll be talking about how to test asymptomatic folks, who gets tested first. So I had brought a copy of a, it's a piece of New England Journal of Medicine about testing asymptomatic folks in nursing homes. And just want to share this with other commissioners so we all have access to it. And it sounds like it sort of previews where the state is soon headed with guidance, which is exciting. And look forward to having those conversations with y'all and hearing where that conversation is going. Hope that we can move in that direction soon.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Mullendorf. All right. Thanks, guys. Okay. And last on our agenda, but not least, of course, is the Fire District request for FY '21 budget. And Jennifer Barnett, I think is going to get us started on this.
Brownie, we did skip over the review of the board's agenda, so if you can do that at the end, if there's any questions the board may have on the current agenda.
For, for the, for this meeting?
Bullet point number two.
I did, I did ask if there were any other agenda items people wanted to add.
No.
Didn't I?
No, you missed it. Just put it at the end.
You did, you did. And I took that for the pre-meeting. I didn't know if you had.
You mean for the agenda for the meeting tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. No, I didn't ask that. I thought, I thought you meant for the, for this meeting. Do you want to do that now?
Sure, because this is going to be a longer conversation.
Sounds good.
If anyone had any questions specifically on the agenda for tonight, we can do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
On April 30th, at 11:15, the Board of Commissioners received an email on a stay-home declaration. It was going out to our public at 2:30 that afternoon. And to ask if we had any questions. And at 2:30, we had the media briefing and you signed that declaration basically saying that the Board of Commissioners do hereby adopt. We didn't, we didn't discuss those issues. But number six of that declaration said that by and with the consent of the mayors and municipalities of Buncombe County. And then on that evening, the news reported that we were aligning with the state. And then Friday, the town of Weaville pulled out. I would like to see if the commissioners would add a discussion of the stay-home order that was adopted last Thursday in relation to as to why Weaville may have pulled out. And did we truly align with the governor?
You want to talk about that right now?
No, so I'd like to talk about it in the meeting tonight at 5:00.
I mean, I'm fine with that. We haven't had a, we haven't had an opportunity to have an open discussion about it so far. So it's, I mean, I don't have a problem having a discussion.
I would suggest we just talk about it right now, if that's okay with everyone. I mean, I, we just had an update. I mean, I think we want to have these regular discussions about what we're doing as a county, so I'd be happy to do that right now.
Well, Jennifer's 50 minutes, that's going to put us pretty close to just taking a break before our regular meeting. I would rather have it at 5:00.
Yeah, because we, we don't, we don't, we don't need to cut into their, their time. And then when we discuss it.
How about this? What if we?
If we discuss in our regular meeting, then we could probably have a, you know, probably have a better discussion because we don't, because in that meeting, we kind of finish whenever we finish. So we might, it might be a little bit freer to discuss and maybe some good ideas come out of it. So.
How about this as a suggestion? Let's go ahead and do the Fire District agenda item. If there's a lot of time left, we could go ahead and have some more discussion now. If there's not, then we can talk further at the 5:00 meeting.
I'd just assume do it at 5:00 and not worry about it. If everybody's okay. I mean, I don't, I don't hear that you have a real problem with that, Chairman. I mean, I don't see that, I mean.
I would rather discuss it at the 5:00 meeting so that we don't take away from them and the budget presentation and hurry through all this stuff just because we want to talk about this. I mean, it wasn't on the agenda for this pre-meeting. And then the, so I'm just saying, let's move it to 5:00. That way we, we give ample time for the presentations that are on this meeting, for this pre-meeting.
Does anyone else have a preference? My, my only, you know, if there's, I don't know how long this is going to take. If we get to it with it early, there'll just be additional time there. So my sense was, you know, we could, we could use it. Why don't we go ahead and take up the next agenda item, see how long it takes. If there's not much time left over, I think, you know, certainly rolling it over is what we would need to do. So is everyone okay proceeding to go ahead and take up the next agenda item? See how much time we have left, and then we can talk further about whether to continue this conversation or to break and talk about it later. Okay, great. All right. Jennifer Barnett, we're back to you.
Good afternoon. I'm actually going to introduce and turn it over to Chief Shane Presswood, who is here with Upper Harmony. He is here to present their information related to their Fire District request for fiscal year '21.
Great.
Chief Presswood.
Afternoon, everyone. So we're here today to discuss our increase that we're looking at for our budget. Prior to this budget year, an issue that our Board of Directors addressed was the lack of staffing at one of our fire stations. We currently have one station that's only manned with one firefighter per shift, and that is an unsafe practice. We've had an issue with it with personnel. We've had public issues, et cetera, in the past. So it was something that our board had started looking at prior to this budget year. Once we received our estimations of what our growth was going to be for the year, we're only looking about $16,000 and some change in growth. We cannot hire a fourth firefighter on that amount. So we are requesting to go from 14.5 cents to 16.5 cents. That nets us a growth of $95,258. And I do believe there's some slides that y'all have seen prior that breaks down what we're looking at for our budget, but I'll just run through just some of the highlights for y'all right quick. So one of the major changes.
Excuse me. Do you have those slides? Are the slides available?
That I don't know. I know it was given, I know it was given as a, as a format to y'all. I don't know if it was put in slide format or not.
I know. I get, you know.
Okay. It was just, so the handouts that y'all received on this then?
Do we have the handout available so we can look at it now?
If not, I can, I can run through it with you right quick.
You can.
Okay.
It was an email that we sent out just to.
I understand, but if we want to have a discussion here, you know, we, we need to have the supporting documents for it. So.
Well, okay. Well, I'll go through. These are just our upcoming issues for the budget year. So issue number one was our apparatus payments. They changed from 25,000 to 51,481.92 for the year. That is an increase of 26,481. That is in change of the 25,000 we had set forth was for apparatus that we had previously purchased. We paid that amount off in order to purchase the new fire engine that we purchased this year. What I came to y'all with last year, one of the discussions was the building loan. So on our building loan, we're looking at, instead of doing a refinance, we were able to do a modification on that loan. And during the modification, we were able to get rid of the balloon payment and drop our rate to 2.95%. So that netted a savings of $8,038 per budget year in that. The hiring of the fourth employee at $12 an hour for part-time is an increase of $105,120 to our budget. Those three items have an increase of $123,563.92. Our projected growth was $16,242. And that gives a balance of $107,321.92. The two-cent increase will net us $95,258, which relieves a remainder of $12,063.92 to find within our budget. We're able to find that within our budget. However, when meeting with county management, we're looking at our potential impacts from COVID. So in doing that, the potential, and the potential decreases between sales tax and RMV, we're looking at a, you know, worst-case scenario estimated losses of about $35,337. So went back to my Board of Director officers and stated, hey, this is, you know, this is a potential impact that we may have. In doing that, they were comfortable with if worst-case scenario, we can take some of our savings and go back and make X amount of those apparatus payments out of our savings to make up that. That way, we don't have to cut into line items, we don't have to cut into personnel, et cetera. So I believe, yep, there's, most of it breaks down in there as well. Excellent. Thank you. So like I said, that, that right there breaks down our need for staffing and one of the biggest needs is, you know, it's a beginning of the year. We started a remodel on that, it's actually an emergency remodel on that station. We had initially budgeted the $40,000 to add that, to set that station up for a second person, adding in a second bunk room, bathroom, shower facilities, et cetera, because that is something that the board has shown that it is a need. Our Beaver Dam station is the, where it is located, you're looking at anywhere from a five to eight-minute response time to have those two people come to back up the one person coming from a rain station. Those minutes matter. Having that one person can be a life or death situation. And same thing comes for our mutual aid. There's no easy way to get to that station, so you've got a drawn-out time for mutual aid as well. So the board has identified that as a need, it is a safety. So the board has identified that as a need. It is a safety need for the public and is a safety need for our fire department. You know, we understand that this is a hard time to come and ask for an increase. Our board is very aware of that. But like I said, they started this process long before any of this happened. And it's something they want to see through for the good of our taxpayers and for the good of our fire district. So that's kind of how I've got, just as a quick breakdown. And I'll be glad to ask, answer any other questions as far as loans, et cetera, where we need to be with that.
Chief, you're adding one part-time person at your second station?
That's correct, for twenty-four hours a day, every day.
Three shifts?
Mm-hmm.
So you're actually hiring three?
Well, we actually be, they wouldn't be for a set shift, so we'd probably be filling with anywhere from five to seven part-timers, somewhere around in there, because they would not be a set shift. And we just did, like I said, set it twelve dollars an hour for the eighty-seven, sixty of hours, which you're familiar with. That's where the one oh five, one twenty comes from. We, with the, we've got a great amount of part-time staffing right now, so we're probably adding three to four people to our roster currently. That would be what we were looking at.
And adding this one person will give you four?
Four twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Yes, sir.
Two at, two at one station, two at the other station?
That's correct, yep.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Not at this time. Thank you for being here.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Well, yes, uh, over here.
Okay, absolutely, yes, sir.
So you have got the station. I know it went through a lot of pain with the inspections.
Yes, sir.
So that's all done. So how about the debt against all the remodel? I understand it went from, what, thirty-five thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand?
So, long story short on that, we started off, the board had approved forty thousand dollars. That was to add in the second bunk room and the office. It was a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars just to bring the building back up to code. To go above and beyond for the sprinkler system, et cetera, a whole nine yards. Our total actually was two thirty-seven, seven oh three. That's the number that came out of reserves for that amount. And that was start to finish, every single option, because we could, the initial hundred and thirty-six thousand was to bring it up to code from when the contractor started. So when the contractor did the work, it was not a twenty-four-hour station. So therefore, it did not have to have the egress doors, it did not have to have the sprinkler system, the fire-rated wall, et cetera. To bring it to the next level for the sleeping, which we already had someone staying there at that point, that's where those extra expenditures came from. But the initial to bring it up was one thirty-six.
And anyone that's not familiar with that area up there, there's no easy way to get there.
No, sir.
And, I mean, uh, I think I read also where no, no one up there is complaining about the increase. They all understand that the need of having full-time there is what we need.
Yes, sir, that is correct. So in speaking with, you know, members of the public, et cetera, and prior to the building being shut down due to COVID, we have people come in and out, and that's been a topic of discussion. And what we did two years ago, when we started staffing that station, we had a great response from the community about that. And they realized that with the amount of training, et cetera, that is on a volunteer, it is hard to get volunteers that have the time to do that. So to answer the calls with increasing call volume, et cetera, we have to hire staffing. You know, and the public is very understanding of that. And they've been more than supportive simply of, hey, I need to come by the station for a question or directions, et cetera. Having those people there is great for the community, you know, just for day-to-day activities. Not to mention the decreased response time, because I know you've been in that area, but for the folks that haven't, I mean, there's areas of district too. If we don't have staffing there, you can have a twelve-minute response time for our main station. That is a long time, and it's nothing that can be changed. It's due to the layout of the roads and due to the nature of the community. It's just part of life. So we have to have that staffing, because that is a long time for one person to be there, whether it be a simple call or cardiac arrest or a fire. That is a very serious issue. So that's something, that's a need that our board has said, we need to do everything possible for that. But with the amount of growth we have due to it being a smaller community, waiting on growth would take years to be able to get that staff, so.
Yeah, I know, uh, the concern was, I just accidentally ran up on it, had people contact me, why are we closing Station Two at Upper Hominy? And you know, that's when I come up and met with you and said, hey, what was going on? Because everyone thought that we had closed it, you know, so.
No, it was just due to the unsafe construction. Sir?
Anything else?
So, so this is my fire district. I'm very familiar with the area, very familiar with, with all of you guys. And I think the challenge that you, you get is that, you know, when we, and it's, it's really hard at the, at this seat when you're looking at, it's not a lot of money, but still two cents. You know, and two cents is, is, is a good bit. So we just have to make sure that the, that the need is there. And just out of curiosity, when you're, when you're, and I think you gave, you know, your information is fine and detailed enough. Where, where would twelve minutes be, just for my, my thought process? If you're running from where, are you talking about twelve minutes from Beaver Dam or tw- if you had to run it from your place?
Yeah, from the main station. So some of the areas we've got at the head of Billy Cove, some of the areas we've got at the head of Smith Cove, some of the areas we have off of Bear Farm Road, due to those being further out, and we have had fires on all three of those roads, those are areas that can take ten to twelve minutes in a large apparatus. Simply, that's from our main station.
Yeah, and so, and so Inca doesn't run to Billy Cove?
They do, but there's still going to be at least ten to twelve minutes mutual aid as well.
Yeah, that's where I live. I lived in, in Billy Cove for, from eighty-two to eighty-four. There's no good way to get.
No, there, there's not. And the same thing, so we have City of Asheville, Inca Canler, Skylan, and West Buncombe all on our mutual aid. So in doing that, Inca Canler is obviously going to be the next new apparatus to there. But even from Beaver Dam area, et cetera, by the time you either go Queen Road, Inca High School, et cetera, there's still, even though mileage-wise is not that far, due to the nature of the roads, and a large apparatus is going to take an extended amount of time.
Yeah, so you got to run a, well, do you have to run a large apparatus every time you get a call?
Uh, for any structure fires, MVAs, et cetera, yes. All of our small medical calls are either run out of a small brush truck or out of a suburban. So you will cut some time off on medical calls. But anything else, we do have to have at least one large apparatus go, whether it be a fire, fire alarm, MVA, rescue, et cetera.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you.
Chief, last question. Has Station Two been inspected yet?
Yes, it is passed and everything is done with that, yes.
As far as OSFM?
Um, yes, everything has been handled with that.
Did you, were you able to lower your insurance rating?
Um, yeah, we, we did. We had the station in prior to, so we actually went from a six nine S to a five nine E. So during ours, we were able to lower, and that was eighty-two percent of our district saw a, a decrease from a nine to a five simply because of the water hall, et cetera. So before all this happened, we were raided, so it was raided within that station being done. So, yeah, we were, we're able to save that, and we were a few points off from a four. Hopefully by adding this extra staffing and the apparatus that we just purchased will be that much closer to a four, and that'll be that much more savings for our taxpayers.
Should be, yeah.
So you think you can make it to a four?
Uh, we were just four points off.
With these changes?
Yeah, we were, we'll be very, very close. We were just three and a half points, three and a half to four points off of four this go-around with the five nine E.
How do you find that out? I mean, that's a pretty big deal.
Yeah, um, so if you, like I said, if you'd like to come, I can show you the breakdown. And what does, OSFM comes through and it's a point-based system, and they can say, here's where you did good, here's where you have improvements, or need improvements. So ours, one of our improvements was staffing, another improvement was apparatus, another improvement is training time and training hours. So those are three places that we can improve to lower those points. One of them, a half a point itself, which is a good portion when you're looking at three and a half points, was the apparatus. That's guaranteed, because we'll have the apparatus, we're going to be taking delivery of it in May. Staffing adds another, uh, probably three-quarters to a point, depending on where it is. Then you can make the rest up in training hours. So we were very close to a four currently.
Could, could you send us something back on that? Because I think it's important to, to know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I, I mean, I live there, so I will have people ask me.
Oh, absolutely.
For sure.
Absolutely.
You know, and to be able to have the good information is, is, is always helpful, so. And thank, thank you all for what y'all do.
Yeah, and.
Do a great job.
Thank you. And Commissioner Penlon, you may be able to answer that. Is that available as public knowledge on OSFM's website?
Oh, absolutely. I, I, Commissioner, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, I was going to say, I've got the, I've got the big packet if you want to see the details, or he can do a smaller breakdown as well.
I just want to know how it relates to your fire department, to our fire department. You know, if it's actually going to happen. I mean, if you're going to be at a four, then there's ways for people to do the math and put the pressure on their insurance company to.
Oh, absolutely. And that's, and that's definitely our goal. That's the direction we're heading. You know, we just were raided a year and a half ago, so we've got three and a half years on that minimum. The state's trying to do every five years. In reality, it's probably going to be six to seven due to the amount that they've got to do. But within, within a five-year period, we will be rerated again.
I mean, I wish we had the, I wish we had the information available somehow that we could put out to the public that, okay, these, if you live here, you should be four. And if you live here, you should be talking to your insurance company about, about getting your premium reduced.
Oh, absolutely.
Commissioner Penlon, does that make sense?
Commissioner, the, um, once the fire department lowers their insurance rating, that goes to the Insurance Bureau in the state, and that goes out to all the, um, the insurance agents. And then it should have automatically be put in. So people need to realize that if, if on their insurance, it's still saying a class nine, knowing that the fire department is a class four or five, they need to make sure they call their insurance agent. Because that does go out.
That's kind of, that's kind of where I'm at, you know? If, if I add, if I add that to my to-do list at my home, uh, or then... I'm not sure that everybody's doing that, and I think that's my point, Commissioner Penlon. I, I just want people to, and I'm not saying that insurance companies are charged more than they should at all. You know, I'm just saying that the public, I mean, for some, some people, that's, if you're paying twelve hundred dollars a year for insurance, you know, that could be a couple hundred bucks, right?
Absolutely. So I'll give you kind of a quick screenshot on it. So when we were raided in the fall, we were told by OSFM that that decrease would take place on December first. At my house, I saw a decrease maybe a month into that, from my parents' house, about the same timeframe. All members of the public that I've spoke to about it within, I want to say about a three-month period, had seen that decrease. And like I said, for us, it was a huge thing, because for the folks that aren't aware, when it, it was a six nine S, if you were within a thousand feet of a fire hydrant, then you would get a class six. If you were outside a thousand foot of a fire hydrant, you would have the class nine. Well, we only have forty fire hydrants for a thirty-two-square-mile district. So as you can see, eighty-two percent of our district was non-hydrant. In doing the water hall, at that point, we were able to lower to the five nine E. So what that means is everything within our five-mile districts would now be a class five. The nine E applies to what's called a six-mile fire district. In ours, for example, we only have about fifteen residences that are in that six-mile fire district. There's a few outlying up towards the Blue Ridge Parkway, and a few outlying on Davis Creek area that are, and that's just strictly unless there was another station built, there would be no way to encompass those within the five-mile district. But as far as that, like I said, eighty-two percent of our district went from a class nine down to a class five on this last. We want to, we're working diligently towards getting a class four, so.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you all. Anything else?
Thanks so much.
All right, thank you all for your time.
So for today, we, let me find my, the clicker. All right. So for the remainder of our budget session, a quick review of our agenda. We will quickly revisit our budget meeting calendar for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one planning cycle. I will review for you today the fiscal year twenty-twenty financial projection. And we will follow up to provide you with some information that were questions from you from our previous meetings together. So today, hearing from fire districts and then the fiscal year twenty-twenty year-end projected estimates. For our May nineteenth pre-meeting, we are scheduled to hear from our education partners, AB Tech, Buncombe County Schools, and Asheville City Schools. We have worked with, you all the county manager has, to establish a special budget work session at one PM on May the twenty-first, where we will review a second pass budget. Leading into June second is the planned, uh, recommended budget from the county manager with currently public hearing and budget adoption scheduled for June sixteenth, with an alternative date proposed for budget adoption to be held at a special meeting on June, on June twenty-third. Any questions about the calendar?
I do have one question. So, um, all of these requests and reviews are done in pre-meeting?
No. So nineteenth is pre-meeting.
Okay.
The May twenty-first is a specially-called session at one PM. June second is the regular board meeting.
Okay.
June sixteenth would also be regular board meeting. And then the twenty-third, I would assume, would be a specially-called meeting at a regular time at five PM.
I mean, I got, I'm sure it's fine, but I, I know, um, that, Mr. Frue, I mean, there's no diff, there's no difference between conducting business in a pre-meeting and conducting business at a regular meeting as far as, you know, if I wanted to do X, Y, or Z as far as the public, right?
Uh, you haven't called this meeting to order to do business and haven't done so by practice. I mean, I think that would be the difference. We can't vote on anything.
Yeah, right. So this meeting, sir, is just a discussion meeting where you, you would discuss, get input, but there's no actual vote? Just like Shane just gave his presentation, but there's no vote on his tax rate?
So on the, on, I'm talking about the budget, but as far as the, as far as the budget. Okay, so that would be in the main meeting then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Currently, the fiscal year twenty budget totals three hundred and thirty-nine point three million dollars in expenditures. Revenues are made up of three hundred and twenty-four point five million in budgeted revenues with an appropriation of fourteen point eight million of fund balance. And this, so the revenues and the expenditures together balance the current budget. As a reminder, projections are estimates based on what we know and can assume at a point in time. Sales tax estimates continue to be our largest area of uncertainty. And March sales tax won't be known to the organization until June first, at the earliest based on a three-month lag in the receipt and reporting from the state, which means that June amounts won't be known until September, well into the next fiscal year. So we are going to move into our review of the projected year-end revenue and expenditure estimates for fiscal year twenty. So just wanted to start here, just gives you the overview of the total dollar amounts of the current fiscal year twenty budget amounts. A reminder that our focus in the, um, in the projection is on the general fund. Beginning with revenues, the current total budgeted revenue is three hundred and twenty-four point five million, which does not include appropriated fund balance. The graph represents three of our largest revenue sources, so ad valorem, sales tax, and restricted intergovernmental. These three revenues total two hundred and eighty-four million of the three hundred and twenty-four point five million dollar budget. Budget staff with input from departments are estimating that a revenue projection across all revenues will total three hundred and sixteen point four million dollars. This, we would receive or realize approximately ninety-seven point five of the budgeted revenues. And again, this is not including the appropriated fund balance. So we expect to receive ninety-seven point five percent of the three hundred and twenty-four point five million. The estimate includes receiving ninety-nine point seven seven percent of our budgeted ad valorem tax revenue, eighty-nine point seven percent of our budgeted sales tax revenue, and ninety-five point three four percent of restricted intergovernmental revenues. Information shared previously is that we've estimated sales tax for April, May, and June to be thirty-five percent less for each month, each month. So again, this is our estimate based on the best information that we have available. And that's what is taken into account in this particular projection. We've also discussed that the ad valorem collection rate for the current fiscal year is trending lower than the budgeted ninety-nine point seven five percent collection rate. As of end of business yesterday, we've collected ninety-nine point zero two percent of our current year ad valorem. Another portion of ad valorem tax revenue is our registered motor vehicle property tax. And our restricted intergovernmental is projected to be approximately forty-two point five of the forty-four point seven million. All three of these revenues have the potential to come in lower than we have estimated. All three of these revenues have the potential to come in lower than we have estimated based on pandemic circumstances. Ad valorem and sales tax, for obvious reasons. However, restricted intergovernmental could also be impacted as departments that receive restricted intergovernmental revenues are not spending program dollars at the same level, therefore yields less revenues. Do you have any questions as it relates to revenues?
Jennifer, I'll, I'll put a pause there and let the commissioners know that with the legislation that the governor just signed yesterday, it had a holiday, so to speak, for vehicle registration, so you don't have to pay your vehicles that is due anyway between now till August. So that would be an impact to our revenue sources that we wouldn't see, and that represents about $20 million for Buncombe County as a whole for the year, so we're not sure what that last quarter is going to do to our revenues.
Any other thoughts, Avril, on revenues, or any questions on revenues?
So if the, let me come back. If the, the sales tax does not drop as much, how are we going to kind of stay on that? Because we're estimating thirty-five percent, and we're estimating, you said that for April, May, and June?
That's correct.
Right? So how will we be, how will we be measuring that because we don't pass a budget until June, so?
Right. So for the fiscal year 21 budget, um, we have, we have reviewed and essentially decreased any projected growth. So we, we kind of took that model, that estimation, and carried that through into the next fiscal year, trying to understand and project to the best of our ability the impact beginning July, leading up through December with a little more significant, um, impact in our fiscal year 21 estimate. We could, and we will definitely review that in more detail on our, um, May 21st session, but we've, we have taken that into account, and right now, we are estimating for fiscal year 21, year-end for sales tax to be at about thirty million, um, which is where we are currently estimating to end for fiscal year 20. Again, if you'll remember, we started out relatively high, doing really well at the beginning of the fiscal year, then with projections to dip considerably lower.
Okay, thanks.
Switching to expenditures, the total amended budget is $339.3 million. Current estimated year-end total expenditures is $321 million. Three hundred and twenty-one million represents ninety-four per, ninety-four point six percent of the total budget. Their three largest expenditure ledgers are salaries and benefits, program support, and operating. These three total $311 million of the $339 million expenditure budget, and another twenty-two million of that is our debt service, which we expect to fully expend for fiscal year Salaries and benefits totals $145 million, and we expect to spend ninety-eight percent. For program support, education funding makes up the majority of program support at approximately eighty-eight million, and economic development totals 3.46 million, with the remaining program support dollars across various departments, much more heavily in health and human services, for a total budget of $116.4 million. We are projecting that we will spend approximately ninety-six percent of program support. Operating budget totals 50.2 million, and we anticipate spending approximately eighty percent. Any questions for expenditures? So what does it look like when we put revenues and expenditures together? So the current fiscal year 20 amended budget appropriates $14.8 million as the amount that balances the revenues with the expenditures. Looking at projected year-end estimates for revenues and expenditures combined, we are estimating a potential use of fund balance of $4.6 million. Any questions before we move on? So we wanted to revisit some of the questions that you've asked us previously. One of the topics is around cost of living. So just as a reminder, the current personnel ordinance has language where a cost of living adjustment is effective in April of each fiscal year cycle, and that the percentage change is calculated in January using the December year-over-year change of Consumer Price Index for urban earners and clerical workers. What we would propose is that we would bring back to you all between January and April of 2021, this percent calculation, and would request from you at that time a decision for any implementation of a cost of living adjustment for fiscal year 21, which would then subsequently impact fiscal year 2022. Any questions on cost of living?
So we'd have a decision point in December about whether to simply continue our current policy, or if, you know, the economy's going really poorly, then that's something we could look at.
Great.
It would be probably January because the look-back period ends December.
Since the time of our budget session together, it's been communicated that the request for the expanded visitation has been withdrawn due to, due to the continuing limitations of social distancing, and that we will revisit this requested item at a later date. I don't know if Commissioner Beach Farrara has anything additional she'd like to add, or?
Oh, I, I think that pretty much sums it up. Um, I did have opportunity to just discuss this with Sheriff Miller and hear his updates, and it sounds like there's a, um, continues to be a strong commitment to being able to implement in-person visitation when it's safe to do so. Um, and then the other factor is just that the jail population has dropped to such an extent that I think it raises good questions that the sheriff's office will be looking at around staffing resources and, and assignment of that. So at a later date, hopefully we'll be able to dig into those questions in partnership with the sheriff's office.
Great, thank you. So our next question was asked about other involved jurisdictions and their ability to provide financial support for the Woodfin Greenway if the MPO doesn't approve additional funding. And in conversation with the county manager, conversations with the town of Woodfin are ongoing as to any additional financial support that they could offer, um, or could be contributed, and we do anticipate a decision by the MPO by May 28th.
Chairman, you're on the MPO, you want to, can you elaborate on that, the, how you feel about the, the project and, you know, its chances? I know we've all, we all pretty much supported it.
Well, right, I'm an enthusiastic supporter of the project, um, but I don't have all the details yet in terms of how competitive that funding is going to be at the MPO compared to all the other projects, you know, that other jurisdictions around the region might be advocating for. So I don't, I don't necessarily have a sense at this moment if, if this is kind of a, a highly likely, or perhaps more challenging. Any other staff have any insights into how competitive that's likely to be at this time?
I, I called Mayor Vihon, and he felt that the MPO had already talked about it, and he felt that it might make it through. So that's the only commitment they can make is that he felt that, that it would make it through at this point in time.
So, so, Chairman, others, is that the, is that the only, um, major greenway project that we look to the MPO for, for funding? Because I'm, I'm trying to remember on the, I know that we had, we helped with Black Mountain and, and Inca, both of those have, I think this is the only one, isn't it?
Right, but I, um, but other jurisdictions seek MPO, uh, funding for greenways too, right? So there's greenways all over the region, and, um, even if this is the only one that the county's seeking funds for, which honestly I don't recall off the top of my head, but it doesn't mean it's the only greenway project that's seeking this kind of funding.
Okay, thanks.
But I think the good news is that, you know, all the jurisdictions throughout the county, not just Buncombe County, Woodfin, I think, see this as a great project. I think Asheville, you know, I think all the towns realize this would be a super cool project along the river, and so.
Yeah, I think so.
Hopefully it'll, it'll do well.
Yeah. But I, I think the, the, one of the reasons I ask that is as, as people, you know, are looking to, you know, to the area in the future, it's going to be assets, you know, these assets are going to be, in my opinion, even more important, um, because people are going to want this to be a destination, and, um, it's a pretty cool project. So anyhow, thanks for the, thanks for the information.
So lastly, a request from our April 21st budget meeting was for supporting documentation of a fiscal year 21 new personnel request for emergency services. Taylor Jones, our emergency services director, will present information to you as it relates to your question now.
Good evening.
So one of the things that, uh, I believe we took from this question was basically our deployment plan, when we start looking at response times, our call volume, and our staffing plan. So that's one of the things that we've been working on with our strategic plan with our team within emergency services, and Jamie has the most historical knowledge of that, actually serving both as paramedic during that time, assistant supervisor, and, and actually working on now as our training officer. So we put together a presentation, and at the end, I'll be glad to answer any questions, but I think it kind of covers where we're at with national standards, and, you know, when you measure EMS industry standards, it's always best to look at NFPA, which is what the fire services use, and the commission accreditation of ambulance services. And, um, so we've taken all that information and kind of made y'all a presentation and discussed our deployment plan, and kind of a snapshot of where we're at right now in Buncombe County. So thank y'all for this opportunity.
Good afternoon. I'm Jamie Judd with, uh, a paramedic with EMS, with the county twenty-four years. So kind of asked to give a history of, of our staffing models that we've done over the years, for the last seven years, and, um, our response times, and kind of go through that with you. So historically, uh, we have staffed actually one short on each of our shifts, and one shift being two. Uh, right now, we run ten, uh, paramedic ambulances, takes two staff members per shift, so a total of sixty people to staff all three shifts for twenty-four hour coverage. Uh, prior to FY19, we actually staffed four people short on our ambulances, and this is allow spacing for part-time staff and, uh, and overtime opportunities for our full-time staff. This meant that we had to fill nine to eleven shifts per week before we even thought about filling for annual leave, sick time, FMLA, things like that. Uh, so you see, over the years, we've maintained that fifty-six, uh, staff member model. In FY19, uh, we were repositioned four full-time positions by interim, uh, county manager Wood, and arranged to a full staffing of sixty, uh, paramedics per shift, uh, for the whole, whole service. So it meets the, the minimal need for coverage, but it still makes it hard to cover for annual leave, for sick time callouts, uh, that are short notice and things like that. Looking to our future, we look at, um, some of the slides we'll see in a moment about our, our future growth and where we need to be, um, we look at a potential of twelve units, and looking at a staff model slightly different, instead of staffing for just what we need, actually staffing slightly over for our full-time staff. So we look at each unit needing six paramedics, uh, we would actually ask for, you know, look at a, a staffing model of about six point four FTEs per truck. That would give one extra person per shift, um, to help backfill those open shifts that we see on a regular basis, and also allow us to move some of our assistant supervisors off the trucks into the field ride supervisory support and, and coverage, uh, for our crews on a daily basis. Uh, we, um, have started doing recently, but we've not historically done that in the past. We look at, um, how we respond to units, how much volume our trucks are handling, we look at some of the national recommendations around how much, uh, uh, volume a single truck should be handling. And the recommendations are at twenty-two to twenty-five hundred calls per unit per year is about where we need to be. And so we went back and looked at each fiscal year, looked at the call volume per unit, and we see that half or more of our trucks are running more than twenty-five hundred calls per year. Last fiscal year, um, our two busiest trucks, which are stationed out of thirty-five Woodfin Street, ran almost four thousand calls each, um, in a, at one-year period, excuse me. So you can see that we're, we're well above that staffing model of meeting that need and keeping the, the volume off of our crews. We know that when our crease volume per truck is so high, this leads to burnout, um, leads to short career paths, and also increases sick time callouts, um, and also helps contribute to our longer response times because of the high call volume. Now, other trucks having to backfill, these other trucks are out on calls, and so they're coming from outside their, their normal districts, so that takes a longer time to come from the Reynolds District into the downtown area to back up those busier trucks that are running continuously throughout the day. So when we look at our call volume and that recommended staffing, um, we think about a twenty-four hundred call per unit per year is a good number to shoot for. So looking historically back to 2013, we see that we're, um, pretty much chronically one to two trucks short every year. Um, after FY19, um, call volume, uh, we're about to, we should be running about twelve trucks per year. We know that, once we hit that thirty thousand calls per year mark, it's going to be a thirteenth truck, and so we're bordering on that, that pivoting time. We need to move ahead, um, with another unit in addition to the two units we're already behind. So looking ahead, projecting out, as we look at our strategic plan, we know that additional units are going to be needed in the near future with, based off of these modelings that we're looking at. So how does this affect our call volume? So in the past, we've tended to look at average call times, so how do we get there half of the time? When you look at industry standards, NFPA seventeen-ten, um, standard, also the CAS standards, it says we should be looking at our ninetieth percentile times. So ninety percent of our calls, how quickly are we getting there? And the standard says eight minutes and fifty-nine seconds. So the dotted line you see across the bar, that is what the standard is, where the solid line at the top shows our ninetieth percentile, um, for response times for each fiscal year. So we're about six minutes slower than what we need to be. How do we address this? Different additional staffing, additional units, and then placing our units where the call volume is at, so we can address that, those issues in the areas where they're happening at. So what we've done, we've looked at FY19, and we developed this heat map. So this map shows the intensity of call volumes. So as expected, the city of Asheville is where we run the majority of our calls, is inside the city limits, particularly the downtown district and the West Asheville district. So we have a very high intensity area, um, if we can get a show here, so, that's on the screen. So kind of where the two forty, Patton Avenue area combines, this, this area is, is a high intensity, and it's an area between three districts. So the downtown district or West Buncombe District and our West Asheville truck coming out of exit forty-four at city station ten. So this is a response, a high-intensity area, also an extended response time area. So we know this is an area that we need to address.
So are you, are you going to talk about why you think that is?
Well, it's just the, that area's seen a lot of growth over the years, so with the revitalization of West Asheville, and then the, the more people coming into downtown, um, we've seen that growth happening over the last ten years. And we also, uh, several years ago, we, um, in the past, we had an ambulance stationed on the Haywood or Corridor, uh, because of movements and equipment from the city of Asheville where we're stationed out of, we had to relocate that to exit forty-four. So that took a response truck out of that area that we normally would have, and moved it a little bit farther out than we would like.
So exit forty-four is the little red hook on the left, isn't it?
Uh, so yes, uh, so, yeah, so the, the, the blue star with the three on it, that's, um, where that, that north truck used to be in the west, the, down, the central West Asheville district is now the edge of the West Asheville district.
Okay.
Um, also, other areas, we, we saw, that kind of surprised us with the south downtown districts, so the Billmar, um, Village, I forty area, so what we kind of contribute that to is the intensity of medical facilities that are in that area. So Asheville Pediatrics, Asheville Neurology, Asheville Cardiology are all located in there, and there's a high call volume. Asheville Cardiology are all located in there, and those are high call volume offices for us. We go there just about a daily basis. It's also at the edge of two districts. So EMS 5 coming out of the Ramble in South Asheville, and then our downtown trucks out of 35 Woodfin Street. Then also, if you look at the east end of the county, Swanonoh Valley, Black Mountain areas, those areas are starting to intensify. And also, the west districts, Inca Canter, we're seeing some growth in that area. So we anticipate continued increasing volume in these areas also. And finally, we took and made a similar map, looking at drive times, or drive distances from our stations. And so we mapped out about a four-and-a-half mile drive distance from each station to kind of average response speed of about 35 to 40 miles per hour, and see where these districts overlap and where our gaps may be compared to our call volume. So the gray dots are each, are individual calls, or the colored areas are the districts and the response zones for those trucks. So this helps us highlight, you know, a huge gap in the East Asheville, the East Bunkham area, between EMS 9 and EMS 4, that we know that in the near future, we're going to have to address. And look at that because of the growing intensity and volume, but also a gap in coverage in that. This doesn't take into account what the fire department amputees are doing for us. This is just what Bunkham County EMS responds to. And if you overlaid their responses with this, this map would grow even more tense. And some of the, some of the gaps may fill in, some, excuse me. But, you know, those gaps would still be pretty evident if we included their response numbers in with this. But this is just Bunkham County EMS. So summary, where do we need to go? What do we need to look at with our strategic plan? And this is what we're beginning to plan now. And we know that we need additional coverage in the West Asheville, Haywood Road corridors, also the downtown Billmar Village areas. The unit that was approved for purchase in April, we're going to be utilizing that on a modified roadside deployment, so moving that truck around into areas where we need it, based off the call volume of that day, until we can get it permanently stationed and where we need to place it. Also, we need to keep monitoring our volume, and the goal of decreasing our response times, to plan better than we have in the past for placing stations where they're needed, not just where they're convenient. And so look at our call volume, our response times, where our gaps are at, and better plan our placement for units in the future. Any questions?
Jamie, I have a question. So, like you said, these are just calls that Bunkham County EMS, our, our 10 trucks that we have in service right now.
Yes, sir.
So this doesn't include, like, so if we were to put the fire departments in there, I mean, they're, they're just as busy as, so this, this could even be even bad.
Right.
If you stick them because we got more, because they're still being, they're pretty busy themselves.
Right. And so, you know, they have their own fire districts they're responsible for. Some of the, the fire districts are willing to come out into the county to back us up during high call volumes. But again, that takes that unit out of their district to respond to their citizens. And so, you know, we know that's our first priority. But what we look at right now is just ourselves to help identify our gaps and needs going forward.
So currently, like, so Rims Creek and Fairview, I think they have two ambulances. And they will come out if needed.
Correct.
But then, on the flip side, we will go in there.
Yeah. And so, so if they're, if they're out on a call, then we go into their districts and help back them up. Fairview, there's actually areas of the county that both Rims Creek and Fairview cover for us as first in, just because their, their units are quicker to get there than ours. Rims Creek comes into parts of Weverville Fire District, and then Fairview provides coverage into Garant Creek, because our EMS 9 would have to bypass their station to get to Garant Creek. And so we had an agreement with them to allow them, there'll be primary coverage into Garant Creek Fire District.
Well, there was a, an incident late January, February on US 70, where Fairview was first in in Swanonoh.
Right.
It was a multi, motor vehicle accident with multiple PIs. And that's Fairview. I mean, all of our east end ambulances were, were at the hospital.
Probably on that day, it was a high call volume day.
Absolutely.
And also turnaround times at the hospital because they're high volume. And we've had issues with getting units out of the hospital in a timely manner because of delays there. So we've worked with the hospital on that, and that's improved the last few months. And we continue to work on how we can improve times moving forward.
So if, so if someone takes a day off, we take an ambulance out of service?
No, we, we rely on our part-time staff. So we have both permanent part-time and temporary slash PRN, depending on how you look at it in the healthcare system, to help backfill those open shifts. This, the, most of these work other jobs. So there are other paramedics or firefighters with the fire districts who work us as a secondary employment. And so it has to work around their schedules. And there are days when we don't get 100% coverage. Or what's, what gets us right now most of the time is sick time. And so when somebody calls in sick an hour and a half before the start of the shift, which is, meets county policy, it's hard to find somebody, you know, at 6:30 in the morning to come into work for you.
So would it be safe to say, we have, we do have days where we take an ambulance out of service?
Yes, sir. There are, there are days. We've gotten better the last few months about our staffing models with increasing some of our part-time staff and temporary staff. But if, if we cannot, you know, find people to work, we will have to take, we start with our slowest truck, which is EMS 10, and we'll use that, you know, because it has the lowest volume, so it has the least impact overall in the system. But that has happened, yes.
Have, have we had a conversation with the fire departments who provide ambulances about what this reduction in revenues is going to do to their ability to possibly continue providing mutual aid?
I'll let Taylor answer that question.
So, Commissioner Pendleton, I have had a conversation with some of the fire departments in discussing what the budget decreases could look like to them, whether they would close ambulance stations down to make up for that if that was an issue. Most of them I've talked to said that would be a very low priority, that they, you know, in most, most instances break even with their cost to operate EMS. However, one of the, one of the concerns that I do have is, you know, how is this going to affect our whole deployment as a community and as a county, you know, if we do have any decreases, you know? Like, some of my first days here, we had to make ambulances because we ran out of ambulances, okay? So I had to pull supervisors, training officers, some of our fire marshals. I gave them the response vehicle that the old director had to actually be able to respond out and meet people on the scene so we can make ambulances. So we've, we've changed some of our deployment structure for the better, to improve the services. And this doesn't include anything that medics done. None of these numbers, when we look into it, includes their call volume, okay?
You just took away one of my questions.
So we've, and we wanted these numbers to actually represent where we were at with call volume, not be confused by medics' call volume, which is another 2,600 calls, you know, with them stepping out of our deployment plan at their request, that took 2,600 calls from us that we will anticipate that we'll be answering too. But on the other side, they haven't, they're seeing an uptick in convalescent calls, and we're not getting called on those calls as often too. So I think in the end, there may be a little bit of balance there. But I think what we have to look at is how we may be more efficient with our capabilities. So those two trucks that we were talking about using during, instead of taking one truck, split those into peak volume trucks, so that between the areas of 10 to 10, 10 in the morning, 10 at night, that we'd actually have two downtown trucks to help fill those voids so that we're meeting it. But then, we're not providing that service 24 hours a day. But what it does do is impact that 90 percentile number, decreases our response time, and helps us to, we can get further into our strategic operations plan and get past some of these COVID issues that, that definitely will have an impact on our community and our revenue.
Taylor, is that, is that 14-minute response time, does that take in, does that take into consideration how Broad River? I mean, the thing is, I know around the, around town here, the response time may not be 14 minutes. Is, is that what drives that up, is the calls going from Black Mountain or Reynolds all the way out to Broad River?
So Chief, that usually, and I'm sorry for calling you chief, I'm just used to doing that, Commissioner, I'm sorry. So, so Commissioner, one of the things that the 90 percentile is cuts out outliers like that when you're going into a smaller area, that usually affects your averages more than it does the 90 percentile. That's why that 90 percentile is maybe serving the most with the most capabilities.
So that means that 90% of the time, we're going 14 minutes. But we got that 10% of the time to Broad River, way out in Barnesville, way out in Sandy mush, that it's longer than 14 minutes. And then you've got a 30-minute ride back to the hospital. And, and then you have the golden hour, or 60 minutes, to get them to a hospital, and we are already behind with some of our, some of our citizens because it's, it's a, it's a 15-minute response, it's 20-minute response to get to them, and then a 40-minute response to get them to the hospital.
So that's correct.
So how, how does, there's two things. One, you know, just for clarification, how does MAMA, the helicopter, work with, with all of that, with these? Because I'm, I'm sure that that, if you're way out in Broad River, I'm assuming that there's, there's, it's not always a drive out there. So that'd be, was the first question. The second was, explain to me when somebody, when somebody dials 911 for, for an ambulance, you know, how do we decide, you know, it's coming from fire departments coming from, from Bunkham County?
Okay. So when someone dials in to the 911 system, the CAD makes a recommendation based on call districts and availability of units.
What CAD, the CAD is?
The computer-aided dispatch that the 911 providers use. So with that, that's what triggers that, that response out to that community. So most of EMS is community-based, based on your fire districts, based on where EMS stations are. However, if that truck's out answering another call, then you have an assist area like Chief Presswood was talking about. And you have these long mountain roads and all the same things that Chief Presswood was talking about that we have to fight against, you know, in a mountainous region, which gives us challenges as far as with our response times. You know, our geographic area, the mountains, you know, some of the things makes it more difficult to do roadside deployment, some of the other things based on, because it's just hard, there's no shortcut how to get there. If you don't have a static station, you got, kind of go around town and then back around to get there.
So how, how's that compare to Anderson, Anderson County? I mean, the response.
So, so there's a lot of comparison.
No mountains in Anderson County.
So there's a lot of comparisons here with Anderson County as far as the lake does what the mountains does.
Okay.
Okay? And the interstate, the way it's laid out is very similar to our interstate. Call volume is very similar. So there's a lot of things here that I'm very used to. And these were some of the same challenges that we built in our strategic operations plan 11, 12 years ago. And we've moved forward with, you know, in Anderson, in some instances, you know, things have improved. But, you know, your population growth, like we have around the lake there, and the population growth, like around the mountains and the downtown area here, that makes unique challenges that, as we build out a future strategic operations plan, I want to weigh the cost and the fees that we collect and lean towards making sure that we're collecting all the user fees from our system and implementing that back into our EMS plan so that we're more efficient with, with our dollars, and make sure that stations are where the call volume are, or we, we use peak demands to get us, you know, through those rough times like, like we're doing now, and placing those units where that call volume is. So to answer the question on mother, on, on MAMA, mother, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it wouldn't fit on, it wouldn't fit on the side of the other one.
So with, with MAMA, those are specialized calls that the paramedics make that request out, you know, based on the critical side of that patient and where they're at. And, you know, those become higher priority calls that, you know, in, in the mountain regions and outreach and areas, you know, that is a service, you know, that, you know, provides a critical service to our citizens.
It's a lesson, yeah.
And this, so rescue squads still participating in all that? They're running calls for us as well? So this doesn't?
Yes, sir. None of those calls were the rescue squads' calls or anything. That was just Bunkham County EMS calls. So without them, and they only provide their service 12 hours a day for us, we would have even a larger issue in that area. So one of the things that we're looking at is how, you know, to expand, you know, our capabilities around that area and work more with a deployment plan that involves everyone. So.
Have we talked to them about them expanding to 24 hours? Have they?
We have had some, some conversations with that. You know, that's, it's one of the things that we have to weigh the cost benefit and, you know, everything going on with COVID right now, too.
And I got, I just got one more question.
Yes, sir.
Talked about our convalescent, and that medic has done that. I know on April 1, we stopped the contract with medic as it was written. But is he, did we come up with something to allow him to go back to the convalescent? Do, do we need to come up with something? Or is that something that Bunkham County may have to, I, I just want to make sure because it did end, this contract did end April 1, well, I'm sorry, well, March 31. So I'm glad he picked it up. Because if he hadn't have picked it up, these numbers would be even worse. But the question is, do we need to discuss a contract to allow him to do that?
So one of the things that we spoke with Mr. Tolly about doing was actually developing that strategy and bringing that back to us, to actually bring to the commission, to look at what that would look at like, and how do we move forward with that? Because what we have to do is do a balance here with all the different capabilities, rescue services, EMS services, fire service, you know, and all that's got to be looked at as we move forward in our strategic operations plan, how we can be more efficient and bring these numbers down.
Yeah. And I'm liking the conversation that we're not, I hate to use these terms, but, you know, we're not in these silos, that you're having that, it's a good question about the convalescent care, you know, to make sure that we're, you know, that we're, we're all working together to make sure Bunkham County's covered and safe. And, you know, everybody wants a response, a quick response time when they dial 911. And we want to try to do our best to be able to accommodate that.
And these positions would all be paramedic positions, or would they be?
The new, the, the new positions are a mix of paramedic and EMT positions. We try, we tried to cut the cost at every point we can do, but still maintain a high quality of service.
Okay. And it's, can, some of our advanced EMTs, are they allowed, can they go get their paramedic? Is there a way that if they choose, they could go get their paramedic and be, become a paramedic? Because if you are in these busy downtown 2 and 12 ambulances, and you're working with an advanced EMT, that paramedic is teching every call in the back. And we talked about two or three weeks about burnout of our county employees. So is there any way that we rotate these folks so they don't, we keep them, and can we get some of our advanced EMTs to be able to go to be a paramedic?
So a model that I've been a part of in the past is where we provided eight hours of time to folks so that they could go and do training while they were working, and they would get paid and compensated for that. But then we'd sign them into a contract. So we retained that person longer, and we would grow them in our system, so they were kind of in-house trained, they knew our standards and knew that, and that we kind of built a model that they would get through paramedic school while they were working in our system, kind of offset the hours. So those are things that we're looking at doing with our part-time folks in the future. You know, the other thing that we're looking at is how to maintain a closer relationship with AV Tech to do in-service training programs, much like the fire system already has, so that our, our paramedics get continuum training, not just in-house, but have monthly training to meet new standards and stay up to date, and drive that from a quality assurance standpoint. Now, can't be all roaming one day. I keep, you know, having to remember that, especially during all the challenges of COVID, and, and where the EOC had, and emergency services had, and 911 had. So there's a lot of things, like with our CAD in the future, I've been talking with Ms. Pinder about actually us having a computer-aided dispatch model, making some, some changes there that would allow us to do better deployment models and, and pull in some newer technologies. Some of those is offset through our 911 fees and things. So we're looking at that because that would be not a cost to a county. And so as we move forward, we, that's going to be part of our strategic plan. Y'all are going to see and hear a lot of Y'all gonna see and hear a lot about that in the future and how that will better serve the citizens and do what y'all were talking about, to bring the community together, working together. Because I, I've seen out of our emergency operations center, all these fire departments, the rescue squads, the IT department, GIS department that built these heat maps, everybody's stepping up. You know, it's really a sense of one Buncombe. You know, not, it's not just a word, it's people being part of that and embracing it. And I think with that kind of community spirit, we're gonna get through these hard times, and we're gonna be able to build a strategic plan and have the best emergency services system anybody's ever seen.
All right, thanks, Taylor.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, thanks. Thank you, gentlemen. All right.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
I asked one question to, there you go. I, I need to ask a question to you unless.
To me?
Yes.
Sure.
I would really, I guess it's to, to the Commissioner. You're gonna find out that, how I care about people and, and, and our staff, I can, I've already been working with them for, you know, quite some time in the EOC. But I have a question on our timeline. Are we gonna try to pass a budget through a public hearing via email? Or are we gonna figure out somehow to allow people to come in and comment live on, on June the nineteenth? Or when, I'm sorry, June the second, whenever the public hearing is? So.
And I definitely will look to the county manager and the commission to answer that question.
It's a, it's a, it's a good question, you know?
Really is.
Yeah, I don't think any, I don't know if anyone's prepared to answer that tonight, but I think it's, I think it's a good question. And let's, you know, a, a lot of it's gonna go to this question around, you know, the governor's gonna start speaking in about five minutes, and it's, you know, one of, this kind of goes to the issue of community gatherings, right? Like, how large of a community gathering can we have? We don't, I certainly don't think we want to do anything that sends a signal that we're not, you know, complying ourself as an organization with community gathering policies. But it's a very important vote. So let's all think about that and, and, and come back to that as we get a little bit closer.
And maybe some of the technologies we're using, like Teams-enabled platforms for public comment, that there might be ways to devise, if we're not able to do it in person, there might be ways to do that so that people could do more than at least send emails in.
Maybe we just let them come in one at a time and stage down outside, six feet apart. Just let them come up one at a time and just, because it, it'd be very displeasing to our citizens if we were to try to do this through an email or through some online thing so they're not here to see. Because you can see a lot of things by people's reactions to things instead of just what they're saying in words. So I hope we'll just give it some thought that we're not gonna, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, thank you.
And, you know, and, you know, this last week, the staff working with the Chamber of Commerce did some great town hall meetings with different business sectors. So, yeah, I think there, maybe there are some other things we can do too. But there is no substitute to having folks be able to come and talk directly to us. So if there's some way we can accommodate that safely, I think we should consider it. But we're probably just need some more time to think about it, think it through. All right. Thank you, thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, everyone, for your great presentations on this. All right, we are about out of time. So, so let's adjourn this meeting. Going back to the question about further discussion on the COVID policies. So here's what I heard. I heard kind of a discussion about the updated order, you know, in what ways is the county now completely aligned with the state? Where is it still different? What's some of the thinking behind that? And the process for talking to municipalities? Where's Whitterville at? So are those the, are those the, you want to just clarify any further about sort of the ideas you'd like to?
Just, just want to discuss the order that went into effect on April thirtieth as it compares to the governor's executive orders.
Okay. That's, I, I'm fine with that.
I'm okay.
So why don't we, why don't we put this, why don't we get through everything else, and then we'll come back to this? Right? Does that sound, does that sound fine to everyone?
It might, it might cool.
All right, terrific. All right, this meeting's adjourned. We're gonna reconvene at five. Uh, one quick question. We do have a closed session at the beginning of the regular meeting. So we're gonna adjourn the meeting, call it into order, but then we're gonna quickly go, we're gonna pretty much then go into the closed session to consult with Ron Payne. Is that correct? Okay, all right.
So we have five minutes?
Yep.